A committee of the whole meeting to order, the clerk would please call the hall.
Mr. Huckkey.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. March.
Here.
Mr. Hamm. Mr. Bowden.
Here.
Mr. Hack.
Here.
Approver or corrections to the minutes of the February 22nd, 2016 Committee of the Whole Meeting? Are there any additions or corrections? If not, a motion to accept is written. Motion. Second.
Second.
Motion by Trusty Huckkey, second by Trusty Hack.
Mr. Huckkey.
Yes.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
Mr. Bowden.
Yes.
Mr. March.
Yes.
Mr. Joe.
Yes.
Discussion of the 2016 Tree Program Contract. Mr. Hanky.
Yes, sir. Steve, before he gets into that, I just, you know, the minutes last time you talked about the gull landing signs. I just, was that ever discussed? It's a, street signs and gull landing were discussed. Trusty Hack will discuss the issue with Manager Hanky.
It's up. They're done. They're out.
They're out. Perfect. It's easy.
The whole meeting goes.
One for one.
There you go.
As you all know, AAA Tree Service is our contractor for removal of trees. The contract's about to expire April 30th. So I mentioned that to Greg, that it was about to expire. So I had an idea to reach out to AAA to see if they would match last year's pricing. And they were on board with it. So I thought I'd come to their board tonight and ask you guys to extend their contract. Possibly for a year. There's not too many companies out there that offer last year's pricing. So. Question?
Can we do that without a bid?
Well, the thing is, is that I looked at the last situation, we only got one bid and it was from them. So you've used them 20...
We used them for as long as we've had a tree program.
Okay. And I think because you, the continuity of the contract, you can extend it. And since they're offering you the same price as last year, I don't, I don't think anybody's gonna come running in here and offer you less.
Roy would know, but last year, we actually had two bids.
We did.
Just to fill in.
No, we were here. It was right after.
I made the stint because I wanted a competitive bid and it came back and there were still lower, so.
Right. The second bid, if I remember right, last year, there was something, there was something with it, but AAA was still the low bidder.
I thought that was before.
No, it was right after, but the meeting, the meeting before we took office was, I think was when we asked for it to be republished because we were looking for more bids. And even after doing that last year, you know, there were only two.
I will clarify, on a new contract, something different that we haven't done before, then I would, yes, absolutely say we should bid it. But these guys have been around for, they've done a good job for us. And it's, remember, it's the lowest qualified bidder, so always the lowest bidder doesn't always get it.
Sure. So. Can we push it a little bit and tell them we're gonna make a special accommodation, no bid form, and see if we can get three years out of them for the same price?
We can always ask that question.
I could push it, Mike.
We're not embarrassed to ask.
Or even two, I mean, yeah.
Ask them if they come back with pay.
Exactly.
So how much is this for? What do we have budgeted for this year? I know you have $50,000 in the tree program, but wasn't that, some of that for planting?
I used $40,000 for tree removal and trimmings. That was my main focus this year. My main focus this year is to, most of the ash is gone.
Yeah.
But the biggest focus, I'm gonna focus on is dangerous trees. There's a lot of maples in, you know, town that are just hollow and dangerous.
And you're just talking, uh, the street trees, I mean, the parkway trees?
Parkway trees, yes. And then some trims. Some trims, they're 30, 40 foot up in the air, you know, they got, I call them widow makers, is what they're called. They need to be removed, so.
I mean, a motion, we accept. Well, I think that's gonna have to actually be something that we put on the board agenda next meeting. I don't think we can do it, I don't think we can do it tonight. I think it would have to be...
Well, you can get a, you can also find out if they'll go.
Yes, multiple years. And I'll reach out to them.
Yeah. So we would, we would bring that back, you know, for the, the agenda for the next regularly scheduled village board meeting.
Because this is really, yeah.
As far as the stumps?
It's a good price.
I feel we kept them on us, so.
Yeah.
As far as the stump scope, um, we've got a few of them out there that are, I guess, when you're talking about this, if they cut a tree down, they stump it. But we've got some other stumps floating around out there, I think, don't we, that have never been?
Yeah, they've never been removed, yeah.
Yeah.
Can you also ask a bigger notation of any type of a, I don't wanna call it a discounted price, but I don't know what else, how to quote it, as a discounted price for residents to remove trees? Because I know there's some trees in my neighborhood that really, that they're dead, they need to be removed, and I know they're gonna be quite expensive. So that if they contact AAA and say, "We're recommended by the village to you," is there some type of a price that they can give them to, you know? Just asking.
No, I hear, no.
Just asking, you know, they, they don't have to feel obligated to it.
Right, right, no.
I'm just asking, that's all it is.
Yep, yep, yep.
That's all, okay? No pressure.
You think it must have better price than if Joe Blow calls up and says, "I want a tree taken out"?
I believe they would, yeah.
You may wanna ask in such a way as if villagers can get the same prices.
That's what I'm, yeah. But I think that would be great.
And can we get that stump taken out in front of Evan Roberts?
Absolutely.
Office before somebody gets killed on that thing?
Yep.
Anything else, Bob?
That's it.
So the tree planting?
Yes, sir.
We talked about, I mean, if you wanted to just get started with that, you said you wanted to offer it to people who took ash trees out?
Yeah, we would offer to, I'd go back in the list from the past years of tree removals and then offer them first.
Okay.
I think that's a fair thing to do.
So you do have a list somewhere?
Yes, sure do.
Yep.
You're going to be going to class to be a tree expert?
Yes, sir.
An arborist.
Arborist, that's a term I'm looking for.
Yep.
Do we have an ordinance that says people can't cut down trees in a parkway without village approval?
I believe it states you need approval, but I think it's been done without approval, let me do that one.
I guess my, my point being, if you're gonna be the arborist?
Yeah.
I think, and Villa Jones, the trees in the parkway, I think we should make it mandatory that it be approved by our arborist and a fine associated with it if somebody just says, "I'm sick of this tree," and chops down one of our village trees.
Unless they plant them themselves.
Even then, once they put it in there, it becomes ours.
Then why don't they cut the grass?
I don't know, I don't want to...
This is what we're gonna get into.
I don't wanna get into that.
This is what we're gonna get into.
Oh, I love that argument, they were asking one. That's a great one.
It's a responsibility to wield.
Yeah.
But I think we should do that just to eliminate, we're talking about putting in more trees and not just get people carpalage to get out there with a chainsaw because they're sick of a tree.
Have you started those classes yet?
No. They start, uh, April 13th. April 13th.
We'll have to take a look at the ordinances written down and see, see what it says. I don't know.
If I look it together, we'll pull it, then you get all experted up, we'll take a look at it.
Do you know what's involved in a tree city designation? Or maybe Greg, you know that, or?
It depends on, it depends on how you write your ordinances, like where I came from, no trees could be planted in parkways unless the village administrator said so. Which you can write ordinances like that. You can write an ordinance that says, "We have an arborist on staff and you can't plant a tree or take down a tree in, in a village parkway without the arborist." Okay. Put a permit out there, we could put a permit fee out there, and we could go to fine out there.
Well, what I'm talking about is, so, doesn't the, is it the National Arbor Day Association? Don't they, can't you apply to get, you know, a tree city designation where you can put that on your stationery or like a sign?
Yeah, it's just like a, uh...
And I think one of the things is that you have an arborist on staff, but I know other, there's other things that you have to have, you know, so much of a budget or something to maintain the trees or have a...
It's like a sister city deal, you have to have so much of something.
Right, and you have to, you know, have like a census or whatever you wanna call it of the trees and the, so, I don't know. If that comes up in your course, I'd be interested to hear.
I think the census makes sense after he completes, he'll be able to.
Yeah.
You know, it'd be good to have, in case we have catastrophic storm or insurance purposes, all kinds of stuff, you know?
What, so how long does that class go for?
Nine weeks. Then you take a state exam.
Can you come, give us a, an update when you're done?
Oh, absolutely.
Tell us what you learned?
Yeah, sure.
Now you better pass.
No pressure.
No. I'm just curious, I'm sure you're gonna like learn some interesting things.
And I think it's, and I think it's extremely important for the village to have this, I mean, I think it's a great thing.
And you maybe, you know, whatever you learned, come up with some recommendations on what we should do with our trees.
Are our trees insured?
I don't know.
Generally, no.
Because it's up to...
Because of the unclearness, even in that side of the, of the law, who owns them? It's in a, it's in a village-owned parkway, but is it really their tree? Did a developer put them in? Did a resident put them in? Did we put them in? I know we take ownership of them, we take care of them, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the insurance company will come to our aid and buy us a new one.
Well, I wasn't as concerned with buying a new one as covering, like, if you have, if you have a big tree, a nice tree, it could be worth $5,000, you know? If it blew down in a storm, could we collect on it?
Probably not.
You don't think so?
Exactly.
Because they do that for homeowners, don't they?
They do that for some, on homeowners, yes, but you have to buy a rider.
Right. Oh, I know, it would cost us something, but we might be able to make money on that deal.
Most of those are acts of God or acts of whoever in insurance companies, especially the risk companies, they got enough coverage. I mean, they'll, what they'll cover is if a branch blows off and cracks somebody in the head, you know?
Liability.
Yeah, we're covered. But I mean, and since we have an arborist, we'll have an arborist and we'll have a program and we'll have our trees taken care of. We'll be in a better position to deny claims of that happening as an act of God and it wasn't our fault. So. Helps on the risk management side.
Anything else?
How do, how do residents participate in the getting their tree cut down if they need to and/or get new ones?
Contact Public Works.
Okay, just give you a call.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You don't have to leave, you can stay.
Oh, you can stay, thank you.
You don't have to. Item five, discussion of the Retchi Mill. Steve Hawker from the Piattone Historical Society.
So, hey, Steve from the Historical Society, and I was before, most of you, several months ago, wanted to get some work done at the mill and just wanted to come back. We weren't able to get that work done last fall, like we wanted to. Been a lot of time, so I contacted Steve, wanted to just come back into the, the group here, just to make sure we're still good to go ahead and get that work done. It's $3,800 worth of work for taking care of the, like, the front door shingles and there's some leakage in around that area. So be some cedar shakes and flashing around there. And then there's the doorway that's on the east side of the mill. And that, that door is shot, it's got big gaps in it and falling apart and craters crawling underneath the, the door and everything. So it's gotta be a new door built there. And then whatever shingles and flashing around that also. So that's the extent of the work. I just wanted to verify, are you still good to go ahead and do that?
So this would come out of this upcoming budget, the budget that we're gonna approve tonight?
Would this be in, in addition to the $5,000 or would it be included in the $5,000?
It would come from that $5,000 that's in the budget.
Correct.
Because the past budget is, is closed out, it's, it's done. So this work would come out of the 2016, 2017 budget.
Right, and so I have a copy of his contract, so I don't know if I need a copy of it, how you wanna proceed, other than me contacting Ron Ward and letting him know it's okay to go ahead and do that?
I think normally, and I'm not sure if this is right or not, normally the work is done and they present the bill to the village and then the village...
But a copy of the contract would be good for our record.
Right.
So I do have a copy of that with me, so.
Okay, if you wanna leave it, that'd be fantastic.
Okay. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Item six, discussion of possible village cell phone contract with Verizon.
Yeah, I looked into our current contract, which was AT&amp;T. Our public works guys have had their phones since, I think they're, you know, just beyond the brick phone, they were the first phone out. The reason why we went with AT&amp;T at the time was because of the push-to-talk feature that the old Nextels had, although I don't think the AT&amp;T one worked as well as the Nextel ones. Bob, you correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct.
Anyway, we have those phones and of course the administrator had a phone. I talked to Verizon, we can get free phones for, free new phones for the public works guys. The administrator phone will be turned in, I use my home. I don't need a, I don't need a phone, it's kind of a silly waste of expense. The only thing that we, I would request is that we get the MiFi, Wi-Fi receiver, because in my office, there is no Wi-Fi. I can't, I'm working off of nothing. And, other than that, and then at the end of the day, it still costs us $100 a month less. I've got both contracts, or both bills in there and a proposal. So. So my request is that we can go with Verizon, I can get these guys some new phones and save us also money.
Anybody have any objection to that?
So the minutes, I mean, 2,400 shared minutes, that's enough? What do you guys, you know, you know what you do now, or?
Yeah. Yeah, because mine will come off of there and they'll, they'll split that. And I don't think we've had, in fact, I know, I don't think, I looked at the last four or five bills, we've never had an order.
No, most, most of the things we do is we text, most of us. Mainly when we plow snow or emergencies is when, you know, we use the phone.
So are you guys using data at all or no?
We have data, yeah.
You do have data too?
Yes.
Is that how much data is included, you know?
That's, I think that's 10 megs, and gigs, I mean, and that's plenty. They're not, they're not on the internet, I mean, they're not scrolling the internet. The only data they're using is when they do text and it's not that heavy.
Well, that's nothing.
Yeah, they're not trolling the internet.
And it is cheap.
Hundred dollar a month.
That's including your Wi-Fi?
That's including my Wi-Fi.
So is that Wi-Fi device, is that something that, so that's like a, a monthly charge to rent?
Yes. Uh, it's for the service. You get the device, I mean, the device is free, but I mean, the service they charge for just MiFi.
Oh, okay, so you'll be getting your Wi-Fi service from, from a cellular?
Right.
Connection? Okay.
I get more bars on my Verizon, this is Verizon, I get more bars in my office on that than I do on our in-house Wi-Fi. I can't run half the stuff on my phone.
Right.
Unless I go to my 4G connection, so.
Yeah, I mean, you just have to be careful about...
Yep.
Videos. I guess 10 gigs is a lot, but not if, you know, you're watching YouTube videos.
Well, I don't...
Well, I mean, maybe there's administrator, you know, village administrator, uh...
I don't make...
Continued education, you know, I'm just saying.
I do still have my computer.
Yeah.
And that, that is hardwired.
Right.
So I can watch those videos on there without using that data, yes.
There's no problem with, with Verizon service?
Hmm?
There's no problem with Verizon service?
I don't know that we have any here.
I think Piattone is pretty good in general with Verizon.
I have Verizon. And I've had Verizon where I work at the hospital and I go into the basement. And I still have the signal, I actually go into MRI department, radiation department, but I still have a signal.
I think Verizon and AT&amp;T both in town are good.
Okay.
You know, Sprint's awful, horrible in town.
That's, that's everywhere.
Nothing personal to Sprint, but it's just service-wise, I know they have Sprint, it doesn't work.
That's just everywhere that they have that problem.
No objections to that?
No.
Yeah, does that actually need?
Not...
I don't, I don't think it actually needs action, I think it's just...
You guys are okay with that, that's why I brought it, you guys know what's going on, so.
All right. Discussion of Downtown TIP Program.
I met with Kay McKenna Company out of Chicago, drove them, her, around. We looked at some of the areas that we would like to either see TIP in or business district overlay, this is what they do. So we are going to move forward to the next step. If we decide that we want them to be our, that we wanna move forward with the Downtown TIP Program, there's some preliminary expenses to do a TIP that you can't draw out of a TIP until it starts. However, once the TIP starts and there's money coming in, we can reimburse ourselves from that. So it may not be this year and it may not be next year, but two years from now, you can reimburse yourself your expenses out of the TIP. So, we're figuring, in fact, I should be getting a bill any, or at least a proposal any day, probably somewhere around $78,000 for the, the TIP consultant to get us to the point of a TIP. So, and that's pretty, well, that's actually pretty cheap. So, what we'll have to do as a board is sit down and decide the map with her and then the business district overlay or another, or another TIP district if we need to, especially off I-57. But at least we're moving the ball forward on this, so. And I do have enough in the budget to do that professional services, so.
Greg and I sat with Marcy last week and kind of looked at that administrative part of the budget, you know, again and trying to make sure that we had what we needed to do these couple little bit of projects that we're talking about doing.
Yeah, we really have no question of qualification downtown. Some of the rural areas that we looked at, I-57, somewhere, some of the places on 50, we'd probably be restricted to a business district overlay, but that would actually be okay. It would be okay for our purposes. I'm gonna ask her, I'm not, I was just gonna say, I'm gonna ask her to come to the next meeting of the whole and just introduce herself, so she, you know who she is, put a name to a face.
Perfect.
Before we do anything, before we get started. We got a long, we got a ways to go on this. We probably, if, if we start the TIP end of April, you're probably figuring somewhere around November before you're approving it. It takes a long time to put the maps together and get everything done, so.
And a 30-second synopsis of essentially a TIP is to attract retail business, industrial, all the above?
All the above.
All the above, okay.
And some residential in some areas, especially like downtown, if we decide to go to mixed-use properties and things like that, residential becomes a part of it, you know? It's just, it's just, it's taxed differently, so it's returned differently, so. But the idea of a TIP is to build enough revenues to continue your growth, and to start one.
Start one.
Yeah. If everybody remembers, I'll just give you, if you don't mind, I'll give you a quick TIP 101. The day the TIP starts, whatever your EAVs are in downtown, equalizes set value, stays. That's locked in for the term of the TIP. So the school districts don't get a dime less, the fire protection district doesn't get a dime less, the library district doesn't get a dime less. As development goes on and the increment grows, from the EAV grows to here, that gap area is what's called the tax increment. That's the additional money, A, you get to reimburse yourself for starting the TIP from, or any expenses that you've had at that point, and going forward, reinvesting in that area. I can't take TIP money from a downtown area and go north of 50 to all the way north Piattone Apartments and, and, and build a building with that money. I can't do that. I gotta keep the money within the TIP district, okay? If you do a separate TIP district down the road, you can always, one can borrow from another, but it has to be repaid. Okay, just so you know. So that, that's the essential 101 of a TIP, is that's what that money is. The business district overlay is very simply, you select an area, it could be as big as this, where there's one business in it and they wanna expand and they're a tax, a sales tax-driven district business, and they wanna expand and, and build or whatever and increase their tax base, then you put the business district overlay on them. It's an additional 1% that you can direct how it goes. You can give some back to them, you can do infrastructure around the area, stoplight streets, curbs, whatever. But that's only in that district, you can't take this money and run down to here and do it, okay? So just, it's a little restricted, but it's, it's a, it's the only tool, really, it's the only bullet we have in the gun, excuse the metaphor, but really, it's the only, it's the only one we have in the gun where we don't have to dig real deep and borrow a lot of money, so.
And competitively, competitive villages?
Everybody's doing it.
Everybody's got one.
Yeah. Chicago has 943 TIPS. Think about that for a minute.
But Mantino, Beecher, those kind of places?
Mantino has one, Beecher has one, Bourbon has four.
Mantino started that in the 80s, I think.
Well, TIPS have been around a long time, I mean, I, I did my first one 18 years ago and now there's a Walmart going in it. So, you know, it takes a while, sometimes it takes a while.
But if we don't start, we don't get it done.
It's just, you know, when we go out and we start marketing our area, it's just, developers are drawn to that. I mean, I know people call it corporate welfare and I know, I know what all the acronyms are against it, but there's, the, the biggest thing that causes a TIP is the but-for. If we but-for the TIP, we wouldn't have the development. And that's, that really is the bottom line. Unless we're so cash-rich, we don't need a TIP and we can just pass out cash. And I don't know any town, except Orland, Frankfurt, places like that, you know, that can do that. And Frankfurt's got a TIP too, so, I, I think, so I think they just did their first one, didn't they? Yeah, so. It's a, it's a good tool, it's got a lot of bad connotation in the paper because the schools hate it, but when you sit, get to sit with the schools and explain it to them and include them in the program at some point, when they get a check from a TIP and they can do infrastructure with it, because that's really all they can do with it prior to the 23 years, and they build new cafeterias and, and they build new classrooms and, and they build, you know, fixed-door driveways and do all that internal capital improvement projects that they can't do with money from the state all the time, it makes a big difference. They usually jump on board, so. So anyway, sorry, TIP 101.
No.
And we'll do that, we'll do that for the general public too, before we get to vote on one, we'll, we'll offer a TIP 101 so people can come in and hear it, so.
So what do you do for, like you said, I-57, how do you, is that a business overlay that you would do that?
We could either, we actually, now in Illinois, you can do both. And we would try to do a TIP out there, the problem is it's being farmed. And TIPS are a little bit more difficult to do in farmed areas because our saving grace is it touches us and, and right across the street from commercial, so we can kindly make that happen. But if over 57, it's farmed and you, and it's really tough right now to get farm ground into a TIP. So a business district overlay is something that you'd have to look at.
Now, can you do that outside your village?
No, we'd have to annex.
Yeah.
And then do it. It can, and it can be simultaneously.
Yeah.
All in part of the same document, so. Makes the lawyers rich.
Er.
Er. So.
Any other questions on that?
No, I think it's great we're doing something.
All right, how about discussion update of downtown business development company?
Well, along with the TIP, I met with a couple of, and Mayor, I had the mayor in on a meeting with them too. They bird dogged different businesses and things, completely different than Buxton, where they just hand you a piece of paper and say, "Go get it." These guys actually go get it. However, and I think, I don't hate to speak for you, Mayor, but I think the mayor and I were both not real pleased with the amount of money they were looking for on a monthly basis. So I re-met with them and I told them that I wanna work more on a reward basis. We would have to put, and I don't know what the amount is yet because we're still negotiating, but I wanted to bring you guys up to date on this. There, if they achieve what they say they're gonna achieve, the offer is they'll make more money than they would've. We can do that because we'll have a signed document and, and a project ready to start. One of the things they asked for us to do in order to reduce their fees is to get inventories of vacant properties and, and downtown, find out who landlords and owners are, yada, yada. I would probably like to try to get maybe an intern to do that this summer and get that completed, because it's, it's hard for me to get the time to do all that. And then intern, of course, we don't have to have on staff for very long. But once we get this inventory, we give it to them and they'll promote the properties as part of their package. I told them that time is of the essence. I also told them that we would do it in three-month increments to look at them. If we do it, and they're, they're gonna have to come to the table with something pretty quick. Because I don't wanna spend, I don't wanna waste a lot of time, I don't wanna spend a lot of time and I don't wanna spend a lot of money. We've done that already. We need results. So, so that's, that's where that's at at this point. I wanted to bring you guys up to date because I knew you were, knew we were meeting with them and give you an idea of what we're looking at. I, I think they can deliver some things, but I've heard that before. I've gone to ICSC, I see the guy with the cat in the dollar bill suspenders out there promising you that he's gonna bring a outlet mall to your interstate exit and if you just pay him a mirror, $19, $20,000 upfront, he'll get that happening for you. Well, you know, and I haven't seen one go up yet, so. So, you know, I want whoever we do this with, I want them to, you know, be forthright and, and actually do the job. And we'll still work off the Buxton information. I mean, I'm not, we're not gonna trash that, but that, that'll be internally. We can do some things there, so.
Greg, how much time do you think they realistically need? Say we hire them to, to do their work to, to get some business into downtown. Because three months to me isn't very long, but I don't want to spend a lot of money because I have a bad taste in my mouth after the last one.
That's what we've talked about.
That's why, that's why we did three-month increments, so we can sit down with them and say-
Do you think three months is enough time for them to do anything?
It's not. It's not. But at three months, I should have a list from them of who they've talked to. And, and I can check back with and see what their, their actual interest level was.
And then at three months, we can hold their feet to the fire.
Yeah, we can hold their feet to the fire.
You know, spur that next three months on.
What'd you think of the meeting?
Oh, no, I, I like them. I mean, I think, again, they're, this is what they do, you know? And I mean, and I think just from, they, they do it well. I mean, they've done it for other communities. I, I have a lot better hope, you know, for them than the whole Buxton experience. And I, I think it's something that, it's well worth trying if we can get them to get to the format that we want them to be at, you know, as far as-
How did they respond to the incentive type of thing?
They were, well, obviously they wanted to be paid, you know, four grand a month and, you know, write me a check. What I'm telling them, maybe a thousand dollars a month and I'll pay you at the end of the day when you deliver something and I'll pay you more than you were asking. That also piqued their interest, because they, at some point in time, if they don't have confidence in their abilities, why would I?
Now, how does that work if you get an incentive-laden program? And somebody out of the blue waltzes through my front door and says, "Hey, I want to rent this building for whatever." Do they, do they get credit for that? It's only what-
It's what they bring.
What they bring.
They'll, and they'll do a contract with that client before they even bring them here. They'll have a development contract with them or her. And before they even come in the door here and they'll say, "Okay, here's what we got." You know, Super Walmart or Suzie's Bridal or, you know, something like, they'll have a contract with them saying that these are our legal representatives. They're, they're here to negotiate deals with the landlord and, you know, and the village. To make sure that, we may have something where we need to do an approval, liquor license or restaurant food license or whatever. They have to bring that to us. The guy that walks in here on his own, he's mine.
What is this company's name?
Uh, I got it upstairs.
When we talk about "talk to," specifically, what do you mean by "talk to"? Is it a combination of local business owners and outside business owners? Or is it just outside that they're bringing inside? What specifically do you mean by "talk to"?
As far as who we talk to?
Who they talk to.
Who they talk to, anybody that they'll, that is willing to listen to.
So what-
They're gonna go to each landlord and-
What makes you think that our business owners, some of our business owners here in town, which I've heard have turned away businesses because they just didn't feel that it was inappropriate for their business, for their building? What makes you think that that's, they're gonna-
We're not, we're not only talking about existing-
That was my question.
Right, we're not only talking about existing, like, empty buildings, we're talking about developing property.
The first question was, what do you mean "talk to"?
Right.
Are we bringing in outside to, like you're saying, to develop other property?
Correct.
And?
Yeah, it's, it's a whole package.
It's, it's all encompassing.
But there may be a property downtown that doesn't want to sell and doesn't want to redevelop that wants to rent. Maybe we, maybe we can fill that.
Which is okay, but that's what I'm saying, that from what I understand, there's been business owners that refused to rent to some businesses because they didn't like the business. I mean, that's not a way to bring business into the town.
That's always one way.
But that's, that's something that we have to continue to work forward on and talk to those people and-
If they run into a business owner that is being less than receptive, then they'll contact us.
And then we'll-
And we'll make the outreach. And then, and that's no guarantee. We can make them do it.
Oh, no, absolutely not. It's their business. They pay for it. It's their, you know, I, I understand.
Some people may want to sit with an empty building. I don't know, too many landlords-
I was gonna say, I don't know.
But, you know, could happen.
We can only get so much out of tax write-off, but.
Right.
There's no tax write-off to not being rented. Absolutely none. Zero.
Yeah, you don't get to take that loss.
No.
No loss.
What do you mean?
I mean, there's no loss. I mean, there's-
Well, they get depreciation.
That's okay.
You get that anyway, though.
Hmm?
You get that anyway.
That's what I'm saying, that's, that's the only thing, the only thing they get.
You don't get any tax break for lost income.
Right. No. You just don't get to report a lot of income, because you don't have it. My brief experience as a landlord tells me I don't want to do that for a living, I tell you.
All right, so we'll bring back, hopefully by next, by next meeting, hopefully we'll have some more information.
Yeah, they wanted to gauge interest too, so I can give them.
Good. Item nine, discussion regarding proposal from Lambert Signs Solutions for custom village entrance signs and directional wayfinding signs.
You have in your packet a proposal from Lambert Signs. It's by no means the only one we have to get. I just wanted to get started on the program and find out about what we were looking at cost-wise for the entrance signs and the wayfinder signs. These are, these are the, the cost that Mantino paid for their signs and I thought that was probably the best parable we can use to do right now, so. I had the guy just write us up some different scenarios on, on entrance signs and then, of course, the wayfinder signs. And that's your, kind of the cost you're looking at without Public Works getting in play without payment, so. And I know you guys want to do that.
Does this include design and everything?
Yeah, that's the design, the construction, the materials.
Installation.
Installation. And really, all I'm looking for you guys is to tell me, do you want me to proceed? Do you want to wait a while? I mean, we can do whatever. I just wanted to get these numbers out in front of you because I know you've been asking.
So, first of all, the, the Village entrance signs, aren't we really just talking about two? I mean-
Yeah.
We're gonna replace one by McDonald's, right?
There are three, and I just told them three, just because I wasn't sure where we would go with that if we had, you know, we could do one, we could do two, we could do three.
Right, okay.
I just wanted to get a price.
Wouldn't we be better off to subcontract our own people as opposed to having them do it on the entrance signs?
Uh, subcontract, contract who?
Well, whatever type of sign we decided to build, like they did out by McDonald's, a masonry contractor. And as opposed to having them act as the general contractor and everything else.
It could be, yeah.
I think it would cost less.
Well, we would definitely get other, I, I think this gives us a starting point.
Yeah, I, yeah, this is what I asked. We haven't even gone to the bid process and that's, and that's one of these things I would need to bid process because of the cost. And it really is a new project, so.
How much did we budget?
That's what I was just trying to, was it twenty-five?
That's what I, that's somewhere I thought.
I bumped it up, because I think I had eighteen and then I bumped it up. It's in capital improvement, I believe.
Steve, Steve, pardon? Did I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Back to Dr. March's comment on the McDonald's sign. I think the only thing that would need to be done with that is, I believe there's a chamber logo on there that's faded.
Yeah.
That's pretty much all that's wrong with that.
Eighteen for the welcome sign and twelve thousand for the directional sign.
So thirty total.
Can you give us some samples of the directional?
Uh, Mantino's. This is the guy that did Mantino's.
But I mean, different variations. I don't want to copy theirs. I want to-
Well, I, I just wanted to get an idea. I mean, you know, yeah, we can get some different variations.
I just sent, yeah, I gave some pictures of what-
Sure.
Now, were these the ones, now, do those, do businesses pay?
They pay Mantino to put their-
Their, their sign in there. Which offsets some of this cost?
Um, yeah. They don't charge them a great deal because they are local businesses, but they do, they do charge them.
Okay.
And we would have to talk about, you know, where we'd want to do the wayfinders. How many would we, three?
Yeah, again, that was a guess.
Yeah.
I just picked it because we have three entrances in the town, basically.
And we were eighteen and twelve, so, I mean, we could actually probably do two and two, I mean, in that.
Sign by McDonald's would be probably closer to the second one, though, right?
Yeah.
And we can do a program too. I mean, we don't have to do all that one year. We can do a program, program it out for a couple of years. You know, one wayfinder this year and one wayfinder next year and one entrance sign, you know, or one-on-one or, you know.
I'd like to see us do both entrances, you know, get those done this year and then, you know, at least tackle-
And again, we would have to go to a competitive process anyway, so.
Do we have to start the process all over with Jim Bolt and FS?
Well, I think we have to go back and talk to them, yeah.
We still have the paperwork that we got all the approval and everything on, you think?
That was back in two thousand nine, eight.
In the file called entrance signs.
What's that?
In the file called Welcome to Piattone.
Yeah. I think that's something that we would just revisit and probably be easier to-
Get the property owner?
Yeah. But I think that's something we can do, you know, right away.
I was just thinking if we had the old stuff, you know, approached them with it, so it wouldn't be like a brand-new thing to them, saying, you know, we got, you approved it then. Here was, here's what the parameters, you know, now we're ready. We've got some money. Might make it simple.
We'll have to look and see, but otherwise, we'll just have to re-contact.
Well, re-contact them anyway.
Oh, no, absolutely, yeah, yeah, no, right, I understand what you're saying.
So the two entrances would be north and south on fifty?
North and south, right. Yeah, south on Route fifty and north on Route fifty.
So Greg, wouldn't you look into this more, like, is there a price, you know, what's the price for, you know, let's say, a business drops out of the program? Somebody else wants in on that, you know, what do they charge?
Same price, they just get a new-
But what do they charge us to print up a new?
Uh, we'd have to get a breakdown of each one.
Yeah.
But I think they're, I think if I remember right, Mantino, they're, depending upon the size you get, because you can get two different sizes. But the most expensive one was like five hundred dollars and I think it cost them like a hundred and a half or two hundred for still had to put it up. So they make about three hundred on it, so.
One-time charge?
Yes. Well, they do, yeah. In fact, some of, some of Mantino's are even annuals. Depending upon which one they do it on. Like the ones immediately downtown, they do an annual on that. The ones out, out further that are less seen, in forty-five, there's one going north. Probably not seen by as many people. They, they, that's a permanent, you know, that's just one-time fee. But they have had businesses fall off of there. Closed, whatever, they take it down, put up blanks or-
Getting back to what Bob said about that faded sign on the McDonald's sign, I know that's been talked about and it does, it's really faded. Can we go ahead and pursue getting that? Because I think it's almost like a vinyl sign that's on there.
I think you're correct, some, something like that.
I know a gal at Watseka, Watseka Signs, and she's done a lot of the surrounding community signs. And we've talked about it. Should we just go ahead and get going on that? I can't imagine it'd be very expensive.
To replace the-
The vinyl covering where it's got the logo on it.
Okay.
Our logo or the chamber logo?
It's chamber logo.
Probably should have the chamber pay for that.
I don't think they've got much money. I'd also like to see a population put on there too.
What's that?
A population segment on there.
I think, I think when we approach the chamber, you know, on that, I mean, it's, they're a logo.
We can participate.
I mean, yeah, but I mean, I think we'd have to feel them out to see if they would be willing to participate. I think the other thing we have to do is- Pardon me?
They should at least share the cost.
And I think the other thing we have to do is come to a decision of what type of sign we want to pursue. And then we have to write, we have to write the specs or whatever and put it up for bid.
Yep.
I mean, until we do that, nothing's gonna happen.
Yeah, this was just what ifs, you know.
So I mean, is it, do we want to replicate the sign on Piattone Wilmington Road? I mean, is that?
That's not my favorite, but, but I like a masonry sign. I think it, it looks-
So do we want to say, you know, Mason era? I mean, we've got to come up with-
I'll take a look at it and see how we can dress it up. Let's see if we can, maybe, maybe we can dress that up a little bit.
Yeah, I like the masonry sign. I just, I think the lettering should be bigger than what's on that sign.
Bigger, and I think it should have been white instead of black. It's, it's hard to read. Yeah. But if it was white against that dark brick, it would jump off there a lot better.
So what do we have to have, I mean, to put it out for bid?
I'm gonna need specs. I'm gonna need sizes. I'm gonna need design thoughts, anyway. And these guys will all draw something. I mean, they're, they're better at it than I would.
Right, no, exactly.
And if you see a sign in another town that you say, "Ooh."
So what, what committee, what committee can I send that to to get that done and let's get it moving?
They're all jumping at it.
Building committee. The building committee.
I mean, it really could fit into pretty much any committee. I mean, I, we could make a-
Public Works.
Public, I was gonna say, Public Works is probably the, sorry.
That's fine. Aren't you glad you stayed?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna send that to Public Works Committee, all right? Try to figure out-
So what are we actually gonna focus on? I would like to see us focus on-
I say, let's, let's focus on the two entrance signs.
And I do the wayfinder for the directional signs.
Focus on the two entrance signs and then-
If we get a, if we get a decent business in town, we may get them to pay for it.
Right. So let's focus on the two entrance signs right now.
One thing I'm never embarrassed is to ask, truly. I mean, we get a new business in town, I'm not embarrassed to say, "Oh, by the way, we need a wayfinder sign."
Do you remember when the developer out at Westgate wanted to put up those signs that we could, I mean, it's that kind of thing, you know? If somebody wants to direct the business, we can piggyback on that, but anyway. I, yeah, I, I think it's, you know, we need, we have to get those Village entrance signs in first, but I, you know, I still like us to keep working on the directional signs.
Oh, no, absolutely. We'll get some more information on the directional signs, you know, bring some other samples back to the board. Let's have Public Works put that on their agenda.
And if anybody, like I said, sees any in their travels, because you guys are all over, either take some pictures or let me know and I'll go take some pictures, so.
And everybody, of course, is welcome to attend that committee meeting as always, so.
Now, the wayfinder signs would be on Route fifty?
Again, that's gonna have to be part of the discussion, whether it's Route fifty, Piattone Wilmington Road, you know, because you got people coming off of fifty-seven.
Right.
I mean, to me, in my mind, you know, Piattone Wilmington and Ratchee, you know, kind of, sort of that area. Piattone Wilmington.
Now, would we-
Route fifty, Main Street, Route fifty, you know, I mean, I'm-
Greg probably can answer this. I got approval.
That's what you'd have to get to put them up.
And I believe you would have to have county approval also on Wilmington.
Well, Wilmington you would, yeah. But we can, that's, actually Troy can write the, for us, to get that approval, so. They, they know what to say to those guys, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
They all talk that strange language, engineering. Yeah, they have a variety of ways and strange things left there, so. But yeah, I mean, that's, I don't know that they give you a hard time on that. If you wanted to put up a bu, a school crossing sign or a bus stop or something like that, they, they should be a hard time.
Anything else on that? Public comment? Public comment, oh, public comment.
Can I, as long as you talk about signs and stuff, we talked a little bit about, the one committee meeting, I asked you about flags. What, did you look into?
We've talked about it. We're looking at brackets and things like that. The problem is, is that those are comet poles on fifty and they probably won't let us put anything on.
That's the thing, they, they kind of frown upon that, to be honest with you, because they're, they're utility poles.
Right.
I mean, I don't know if they could reach out to, I don't know what they'd say, but-
Well, I talked to, God, I cannot remember those guys. If it was Scott Bertrand, I'd know her, like, I know that.
Together, that's a little form.
Roland, Roland Brown. I talked to him a little bit and he kind of hemmed and hawed a little bit and said he'd find out, but I haven't heard back from him. So I'll have to get in his ear again, but I really don't, he really didn't sound excited about it, so.
I was driving through Mantino the other day and I know Mantino owns those decorative streetlights.
They own the decorative ones, yes.
But they were also doing some, looked like putting those clamp things up on the, does the Edison own or Commonwealth?
More than likely.
But they were putting them up on those on Route fifty, I noticed last week.
And maybe we reach out to I-DOT and I-DOT says, "Go ahead." I mean, that's a possibility too, but, you know. Yes, I know, they own the decorative ones and I know they've decorated the decorative.
Yeah, but they were decorating. I'll, I'll ask them next time I'm down there.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I can, I'll, I can call Bernie too. And he may, and knowing Tim, he probably just said, "Put them up" and they'll tell, they'll, you know, let them tell us to take it down.
Right, exactly, yeah.
But there's an expensive one with that. Those brackets are a hundred and, what do we, I looked, I got, in fact, I got the catalog upstairs. They're a hundred and ten dollars a bracket and then that's not the cost of the flag and the pole, so. So if you have fifteen of them, that can get a little expensive, so. If you do every other one, that may be more reasonable, so.
Well, keep working on that too.
Yep. Oh, yeah, we've been talking about it, and I got to make sure Public, that's why I asked them, since the conversation started, you got a bucket big enough to put those up, because we got to make sure that these guys can get them up, so. ComEd is not going to come up and do it for us.
Is there an opportunity to recoup some of that cost from businesses? To advertise?
Always. I mean, we just have to send a letter out and ask.
See who wants to be up there.
You got to be careful how many times you hit your business.
Well, I mean, it's advertising for them, though.
I was just talking about American flags.
He's talking about American flags.
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking about the banners with business names on them.
No, that's a whole different program. That's, that's a huge program. And I know ComEd won't let you do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we do have the banners, didn't, we had, the Chamber did a business thing-
Downtown, yeah.
Not too long ago. I mean, probably 10 years ago.
At least, yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe a little longer.
Are those around anymore, or what happened to those?
The banners?
Yeah.
We still have most, well, we don't have most of them, but a lot, half of the businesses are-
Are gone.
Gone.
Do we still have the brackets for those?
We do.
Do.
Now, do you do American flags downtown?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Since we got a couple one minutes left on the general, on the public comment, is there any update on the all automotive being closed down for violation, code violations?
I have not heard of that.
Oh, yeah, they've been closed down for a little bit, electrical code violations.
Oh, closed.
ComEd from what I understand.
I'm glad to hear that. I mean, I'm not glad to hear that, I'm glad to hear that.
I have, I have not, I have not-
They were closed a couple days.
I have not heard word one on that.
Okay. We want to look into that.
Yeah, definitely.
I did notice the sign, what Roy was saying on the door, it said electrical issues.
ComEd shut them down because-
Was it even, I'm sorry, which one?
All automotive, one in the corner, first and second.
Some type of code violation.
I could make Ron stay twice tomorrow.
Yeah, no, first I've heard of it. Anything else for the committee of the whole? If not a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Trustee Jones, second by Trustee Bowden.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Hagg?
Yes.
Mr. March?
Yes.
Mr. Upkey?
Yes.
Committee of the whole is adjourned. We will re-adjourn the regular Village Board meeting at 7:00 P.M.
Yeah, I got any sign I'd like, please come and see.